Welcome to the meeting. Welcome for the vote, welcome and remain pleasedly, I'll leave it down. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. I roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Money?
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
All right, the mayor's coming in remotely, so we're going to cause meeting to order in accordance with the public act one oh one dash zero six four oh five ILCS. The city council meeting will be held remotely based on the probatorial disaster declaration of the mayor of the city of Braywood determining that a full person meeting is not practical and prudent due to the remote attendance. I would ask Commissioner Salzman run the agenda as a temporary chairperson of the meeting. Is this what you want, Mayor?
Yes, would you please do that, please?
I certainly will, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we did roll call, right?
Yes.
Excuse me for a little bit here, I wasn't aware of a lot of this stuff. I probably should have been in and talked to the clerk earlier in the day and all that, but I've done this before. It's a little bit odd to be up here today, but we're gonna make things work some. All right, at this time, we'll open up for public comment. Please step forward, state your name, address, what you want to speak about.
My name is Jay Dixon, I live on one ninety-five North Lincoln Street, and I want to know why the sidewalks haven't been cleaned. Nobody's ever been down my sidewalk, see now there's an awful lot of sidewalks that don't look like they're clean. Can you tell me why, Fay?
I'll answer that. Sidewalks to get the roads fixed, and people are supposed to shovel their own sidewalks by all means, but we're trying to help them, and the only thing we had was to get them was tore up, and we got it fixed, it's tore up again, and we done all power that we could to do what we could, and it was, we don't have money to buy all this extra stuff, and it just, we broke down.
You're telling me the sidewalk, the thing for blow to clean the sidewalks, it broke down?
No, I said the blower.
Yeah.
The tractor that we...
It's broke down?
Has been broke down twice.
Okay.
It's broke down now, but however, it's so big, and it throwed up, the state and everything else, throwed all that stuff up there, it can't get through.
Okay.
But we done everything within our power to get it done, and it's just more than we could do.
We only have one snow blower?
A snow blower, but we, my power's been cut, so I don't have people to do these all.
Oh, don't start, you've got people to do it. What do you call it, are you saying you only have one snow blower down?
I don't know.
We only got, okay, if we only got one, that's, that's...
The John Deere, the John Deere.
The John Deere?
That comes, listen, it's overdone, the snow blowers with those clunks that goes in there.
Well, maybe we should go in there with the Bobcat and say no the clunks.
If we had the money to buy something and had the manpower to shovel, we'd have had it done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next? State your name, please.
Andy Galati, five oh eight North Washington. I'm here to help Fay and the people of the public to understand exactly what's going on. Fay is working with machinery, he's twenty-some years old. Instead of this administrator working with him, this administrator's working against him. He doesn't want to help him. He sends his people up here to pick on poor Fay. Fay's been a four-term commissioner, he knows what's going on. Same thing like Mr. Dixon, yes, we only have two, and the one that Fay's talking about breaks down all the time. So instead of buying bush hogs, he should go out and buy some equipment. The trucks are twenty-some years old, so Fay's working with the staff that's cut down by two people because they didn't agree to the hundred fifty thousand dollars he did on his cut. Fay's budget's been cut three times since he's been commissioners, so I wish this administrator would understand it. Thank you.
Thank you, that's the truth.
Anybody else want to come up for public comment, please? Please state your name, address.
Good evening, Jim Bear is one sixty South Cook Street, Braywood, Illinois. I don't know who's doing your water billing, what girl's doing the water billing?
They're all, she's all working together.
Okay, well, I appreciate you getting the water bills out before the first of the month, because those retirees, they get paid on the first, makes it a lot easier when you got all your bills in front of you, so let them know that, we all appreciate that. Another thing is the sidewalk issue, I understand, you know, Andy was right, the equipment's old, but the city of Lockport, city of Joliet, Shanahan, they don't, they don't do their sidewalks. This was put into effect to help our homeowners out, but it is the homeowner's responsibility, if they want your sidewalk cleared, declare your sidewalk. So that's all I have to say, and let those girls know they're doing a good job on water. Thank you.
I'll do that. Thank you. Anybody else want to express anything on public comment? Please step forward. If not, this time we'll close public comment. At this time, I need a motion to approve the minutes of our January twenty-sixth minutes. I can't read the motion, ready?
I second that motion.
Okay. This time, I have a motion.
Michael?
Who here?
Michael made the motion, right?
Oh, motion.
So we need, we have a motion, we have a side.
Okay, roll call.
Michael?
Yes.
Money?
Yes.
Salzman?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Jones? Is that a yes?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mary. I must comment, our city clerk Adam has done a fantastic job. I've told him a couple of times, and I hope his head don't get too big, because he's doing a great job with the minutes, because he'd come a long ways, I appreciate that. So, okay, this time, report to city official, Mr. Mayor.
You got anything, or you're good? No report?
Okay, all right, at this time, our administrator, Mr. Up three.
All right, speaking of which, you were talking about the water bills, if everybody, which I know if we put on Facebook, when, gets signed up on the water bill on our site, you'll be able to see your past bills, your current bill, your current usage, everything bought it, it's really going really well. So I have on that, but as far as our old equipment, it's very easy for everybody, certain people to attack the people here, knowing that we've been here a year, so I mean, I guess you could speak to maybe ex-mayor, and if we wouldn't have overspent by millions of dollars, what equipment was bought in the last four years? You're administrator, what time? I just researched, there's been no equipment bought back then either, so I'm not asking for public comment, I'm making a statement that these people in the past have not done any of this. The equipment that's here now is everything that's been here, Mr. Smith, all the rest of them, so, you know, instead of always starting issues and creating stuff, maybe somebody work with people, including Mr. Smith, I know we always have those little comments back there from peanut gallery, but that's on you. We are working forward, we've already cut more expenditures, brought in more money and businesses than anyone has in years, so that's all I gotta say.
That's a lie.
Everybody's entitled with their opinion, right or wrong?
Please, I...
I'm done.
All right, I kind of want to add something here. Being the finance chairman, I've talked to our finance accountant taking care of the, I told him that there hasn't been a line item, there hasn't been anything that we need to step forward, that I need to talk to Doug and Rob, the plant is over ten, almost eleven years old, street department, naturally, you're right, we, there hasn't been nothing done in a long time. I'm hoping that, I know the budget may be tight, we're gonna have to do something, whether go out for bonds and borrow some money, because I know the administrator mentioned that earlier in the year, that there's something that needs to be done, where if we can buy a two or three-year-old truck, that something needs to get started, so hopefully, as finance chairman, I can maybe put a step forward on that thing. All right, that's all I have to add to his, our city clerk, Adam?
The only thing I have this week is, now that we have loosened up some of the restrictions due to COVID, we're seeing a lot of our businesses open back up, especially for gaming and entertainment. As such, gaming licenses, as I mentioned at the last meeting, will be done within the week, those are ready, and the stickers that need to be affixed to the machines are also ready, so local businesses that may be listening live tonight, please swing by, pick it up from the drive-up window, so we're up to compliance, and we can all enjoy ourselves with these lifted restrictions, so get these businesses rolling. That's all I have.
Thank you, Adam, thank you. Engineer, Mr. Weller?
He's not here today.
Thank you. Mr. Weller, vote.
I have nothing to report tonight, thanks, Mike.
All right, leaves it up to me. All right, first thing, the approval of bills, you can my hearing straight here, my glasses shaking. I make a motion that we pay bills of one hundred forty-four thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and seventy-two cents.
I'll second this.
Roll call.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Money?
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
That was a yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, I roll with a couple of adjustments that the clerk told me ahead of time, I told him the bills of eighty-one thousand, first of all, I make the motion, they, they told eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents, I make that motion.
I'll second it.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Money?
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, on my part of the thing, we have an ordinance pending section eighty-six to all one bulk water purchases to provide for a service fee. I'll turn that over to our public property, Mr. Money.
You want me to make a motion?
Yeah. But explain, first of all, explain it to, so everybody knows what, unless you need help from attorney, no?
No.
Okay, let me explain it, please, so everybody knows what's going on.
Ordinance number twenty-one oh two, that we're starting to vote on here in a minute, establishes a service fee for the bulk water purchases. What this is, is for when companies come in here, we come over and put the water meter on the fire hydrant so they can get water, and it records how many gallons that they purchased. What this does is establishes a hundred dollar service fee to cover the cost of the, one of the people from the plant to come out, put the meter on, come back, take the meter off, record the data, give it to the girls in the office, and then for them to bill them. The problem that we've had in the past is people are coming in and buying water, and they're paying for it, but it costs me more money to have people do the work than what we're actually getting paid. So this kind of takes care of the bill for that, so that we're getting at least adequately paid for what we're doing for them. We're providing a convenience for them because they're able to buy water. When they're buying water, thousands of a gallons at a time, to get it through the garden hose, it's taking forever, so because they can use a fire hose into their truck, it speeds things up for them, and like I say, it records the amount of gallons that they use, and that's not been a problem, it's just that we are spending too many man-hours to provide a convenience for the outside contractors, and that's what this is for. So, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve an ordinance amending the city, amending section eighty-six dash two oh one bulk water purchases to provide for a service fee.
Second, I'll roll call.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Money?
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Our citizens, I've probably noticed over the years that they usually go to this hydrant right out here by the city parking lot, they use that a lot, a lot of your businesses, I'm trying to remember which ones are, that come and use that, so, and I didn't realize, and I can see where many Mr. Money's coming from, that we had to recoup the time and labor for taking care of it, so I go along with it, Mr. Money. All right, next thing, ordinance amending the city code, article, article five, section seven eight, four oh, section seven eight, one fifty, hotel motel transit occupancy rental and related matters. Mr. Weller, would you go a little bit further on that?
Sure, so this is an ordinance that was proposed by Azivar, which is a subcontractor contractor that works with a lot of municipalities across the nation to basically audit all of the city's ordinances, utilities that are available in that town, and suggest ways to collect money that we'd otherwise be missing. This one in particular, they're suggesting adopting an ordinance related to like your Airbnbs, your, you know, vacation rental by owners, those short-term stays that are not your traditional brick-and-mortar hotels, where you would be getting your typical hotel tax from a brick-and-mortar hotel, the city's missing out on that, on VRBOs and Airbnbs and similar products. So they're suggesting that we adopt this ordinance that would provide for a service fee when someone rents out their home or apartment or whatever it is through those, through those forms. This is not going to be something that the city bills and tries to collect directly, it will be something that we provide to those companies, and they provide it as a service fee on the front end of those rentals. Azivar is suggesting that it could increase revenue approximately ten to fifteen percent on service fees from hotels. We can also increase the amount of the hotel tax for our brick-and-mortar stores. I don't know how prevalent this is in the city, but Azivar is someone that doesn't benefit unless the city benefits, and they take like a small, you know, service fee from whatever, you know, they collect in their audits. I don't recall what that is, but it's generally the same across all municipalities. Long story short, they're suggesting that we adopt this ordinance to collect service fees from the short-term rental hotelers. This is not something that my office worked on, it's something that Azivar suggests, and I believe that they have probably very similar ordinances across the nation.
Right, we already have it for gas and Comcast or different utilities, where if they don't find uncollected taxes, they don't get anything, so if they find, let's say, a hundred dollars in unpaid Airbnb, they would take a thirty percent cut or something, but we're still getting seventy percent of something we would not have had before.
Yeah, and I don't think it's that high, but yeah, that's an example.
Yep.
And that point you recommended, correct?
I think it's a good idea, yeah. You know, if we have a lot of these in town, I think it's a good idea, why not?
Okay, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance amending city code, article six, section seven eight dash one four zero to section seven eight dash one five zero regarding hotel motel transient occupancy rental units and related matters.
Looking for a second. I start again, man. Roll call.
Commissioner Michael?
Yes.
Commissioner Money?
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, this is something that's gonna, that'll probably affect us more in the future, now that we're finally bringing businesses in town, they'll have a more prevalent chance of collecting some taxes from that, too.
Okay, as long as I have the floor, kind of a little brief update on the food pantry. We had twenty, twenty-four clients come today, about the same as last week, still a little bit disappointed, I've heard out there that a lot of people still don't know that we exist, which is hard to understand, that this is our seventeenth year we've been in existence, so hopefully we can, we can get the word out there better. We can't, we don't have the luxurious radio station that broadcasts for us and help us on that, but anyway. Also, our Thursday giveaway, it maintains about twenty, twenty-six, that's the freebie, freebie day, there's nobody, no question asked, just sign in, you get, we get rid of all the bread and produce and stuff that was left over from Tuesday and Wednesday, and then it doesn't go into waste. Then, you know, it's natural, we still have our pig, our pig guy that picks up vegetables and that, and we have a couple of people that pick up the bread and stuff like that, we're very fortunate, they have that. And another thing, too, is we had a good fortune of somebody coming through and donated a hundred, hundred hams for us, so we've got, we've got hams to give on Easter, so we're, it don't cost to us, and that's, so, but if you know anybody out there, your neighbor or something, that isn't the, it, it is, you don't have to feel bad, ashamed or something, this is what this is for, is for the city of Braywood and our people. When you come in, well, now, see, we do a remote outside now, because the fact is not letting people go through, that's going to change March first, people will start coming back, go on through the, through the front. When you go in the front, you talk to them, this is Brandon, you sign your name, you have to, and you're assigned a number, we, the volunteer, no, we don't know you, we don't know your name, and this is what, I started this, this is what we're here for, so, you know, it is disturbing that you see on the news in the Chicago area, different areas, people are in lines and all that, so, you know, if you know a neighbor, say, have them come to the pantry, that's what we're here for. All right. Thank you. That's all I have. Now move on to streets and public improvements. Mr. Smith?
I have bent over, listen, I, they cut my budget a hundred fifty thousand and agreed, the water department agreed to let me help them too, and they paid, well, they spoke with fork and tongue, they didn't do, and another thing I'd like to know, I'll tell you, every time we have a meeting, you save so much money, well, we should be running over, our pot should be running over, but we're still hurting, that don't make sense, does it?
Could I help you?
Every time, every time, you've always saved a lot of money, where did it go?
Would you like an answer on that? All right, just to answer Mr. Smith's, it's a rebuttal, in the last council, when we came in here, our, every two-week bills averaged between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand, every two weeks, I'm sorry, what was this week? Hundred forty-four thousand, we very rarely go over more than a hundred and fifty thousand every two weeks, that's three hundred thousand a month compared to six hundred thousand a month from the previous council, and it's all on paper, anybody can FOIA stuff, you can find it out, whatever, so in order to where we can buy more equipment, we have to get it back down to where we are now, and the way the books look now, this could be the first year we've actually had a balanced budget, and they don't even know, they don't even have a fifteen years, twenty years, so what we're doing is saving money, if we're not spending it, and we're not overrunning, and we're not draining the water department, we're not draining all our extra funds, that's saving money.
Yeah, but you're draining me, every time you turn around, you...
I don't touch your budget ever.
I disagree with you.
Can I ask a question? And if everybody wants to research this, when the budget was passed in the beginning of the year, it was five yes, zero no, not one of those yes votes was from myself, I don't vote. All these three here, with the exception of Mr. Hart, all voted yes, so if it's mine, if it was my vote, I would have voted no, if I didn't feel the budget was right. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith.
But something is always on me, that my old equipment is breaking in there, and working, they're down there working on, stuff today is broke, and what they're throwing on me that I'm supposed to do ain't my job, but it's, if it goes wrong, it's my job. I have put more time in here on Sunday, Saturday and Sunday, following my guys up, see if they done what I've asked them to do, and I have had no problem, none so whatever, working with all this, till you come, and I've had all kinds of trouble. I can't seem to do nothing right, if I throw down a hundred dollars of bills every time I come in here, it'd be wrong, and I'm doing the best I can, and I'm gonna keep on doing what I can for the people, because they put in, and they'll be the one that takes me out. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to public building property, Mr. Money?
Thank you.
Okay, the last two weeks, they plowed snow, scraped ice, salt, plowed snow, et cetera, you're used to the weather now. We helped the street department work on the plow trucks, cleaned up the eastern burner fire, put it back online, finished the UV bulb changes, cleaned the tubing, pulled the air filters from the Triton blower so they don't freeze up in this polar cold that we have, replaced a foot control box at Peasant Run lift station, it's been giving us fits, and then to top it all off, at eight sixteen last night, we had somebody drive through the gate at the plant and destroyed the gate. They drove through it at approximately forty miles an hour, I have no idea what was on their mind, they did then, continues to the plant, stopping in various places. Fortunately, they drove over by the best camera we had there, so we got a really good picture of them as they were leaving, we got license plate, we got their face. We are going to be turning this over to federal authorities, Department of Homeland Security is gonna take it, they are gonna charge them terrorists and that, so if they're out there, if they know who they are, they probably should turn themselves in before that, and we will consider reduced charges, otherwise, we will let the federal authorities do what they want. That's all I have right now, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Money. Public health and safety? I have nothing for tonight. All right, thank you. Plant, zoning, public plant, planning and all that? Plant, zoning, public plant, planning and all that, anything? Nope? Old business? Anything on our old business, anybody got anything to talk about? All right, new business, any new business, anything coming up that we want to look forward to? At this, okay. Anybody want to go into exactly what their business say here, so. All right, next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, February the twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, at seven p.m. I make that motion.
Make the motion to adjourn.
He got me. Melman, Mr. Melman, you were supposed to be there directly. Motion to adjourn.
You can make that motion.
No, go ahead.
I'll make the motion.
Doug, Mr. Money made a motion fair. Are you seconding that?
I'll say.
Roll call, it's a little pun, guys, we got one between me and Mr. Melman.
Commissioner Michael.
Yes.
Commissioner Money.
Yes.
Commissioner Salzman.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Mayor Jones. We are adjourned.
Any adjourned, thanks for coming along, everybody. I hope we solved everybody's problems, we apologize for bad weather and the snow, and that, not too much we can do about it.